Okay, I'll call to order the meeting of December 18th, 2008, of the Santa Barbara Planning Commission. Ms. Feliciano, will you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlett?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs? Commissioner Justice?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
And Chair Myers?
Here, and Ms. Jacobs just joined us. Mr. Cotto, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
We do not.
Any announcements and/or appeals?
Nope.
Okay. At this time, we will take public comment for anything that is not on our agenda. If someone wishes to speak to us regarding something that's not on our agenda, please step forward. I don't see anyone. So I will close the public hearing and bring us to our first item. It's item number three. It's a new item. It's the application of Cornell Underlytus Architect for 1704 State Street. Project is at 1700 and 1704 State Street. And our case planner is Suzanne Johnston.
Good afternoon.
Johnston.
Good afternoon, Chair Myers, fellow commissioners. The project before us, like you said, is at the corner of State Street and Valerio at 1700 State Street and 1704 State Street. The proposal is the construction of an addition or demolition of the 992-square-foot detached building at the southern corner of the property and an addition of approximately 5,400 square feet to the existing 12,000-square-foot building that's on the lot, the lot, to expand the Artificial Kidney Center. As a result of the location of the addition, four existing coral trees will be removed. An existing bus stop along State Street will be removed because two driveway curb cuts at the lower end of State Street will be removed from the property and the parking lot reconfigured. Also, a trash enclosure will be relocated from the 1704 lot up in this area, down into this area at Valerio Street entrance to relocate it onto the commercially-zoned portion of the lot. Voluntary lot merger is being requested to merge the lots. As you can see, the 12,000-square-foot building straddles the property line, so that property line will be eliminated. We had received an email and a letter, which has been forwarded to you under public comment, that had some concerns about a parking area that is located in this area here, which is zoned residential. It's a parking lot for non-residential use in a residential zone, which will require a conditional use permit. And the neighbor to the north, which is here, had some concerns regarding the noise issues associated with the parking lots on 1722 as well as 1704, and there's also multifamily parking lots on these two lots. After speaking to him and forwarding the staff report to him, it appeared that we'd addressed main concerns with hours of operation, and the parking lot has been in existence since 1974, when the bank buildings were originally constructed on the lot. The discretionary applications for the project are a parking modification. Fifty-two spaces are required for the project. Forty-one spaces are being provided, and there was a parking demand study that is included in your staff report that states that the 37 spaces would meet the demand of the project. Again, the conditional use permit for a non-residential parking lot within a residentially-zoned portion of the lot is required, and development plan approval for a 4,400-square-foot addition that would be allocated from the minor and small addition categories of under Measure E would be required. Whoops. And staff is recommending the approval of the modification, the conditional use permit for non-residential parking in a residential zone, and the development plan making or subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit 8, and making the findings that are listed in Section 7 of the staff report.
Chair.
The applicant here, I don't know if he also has a presentation. I think he does.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff by the commission at this time?
Any?
I don't see any. So, Mr. Cornell?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I will be relatively brief here. My name is Brian Cornell. Dr. Tom Allen is with me today, along with his partners, Dr. Mike Fisher and Dr. Daryl Joseph.
No?
Reset. Three.
Maybe you won't have to have a presentation from me. I look forward to it. No, it's okay. It's in. Maybe I should answer any questions you have. The parking mod, just if you have any questions on that as far as the operations, I know that Dr. Allen would be helpful in probably explaining that. We talked a little bit about the massing of the building at the site visit, and we've been working with HLC, as you know, on that. We'll be obviously returning to them. They have a few things that they want us to work on. So we have the plans, and I'm sorry that we have this little glitch. Thank you, Danny.
Yes, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's time for questions, particularly regarding the parking study, I've got one question I'd like to pose either to staff or to the applicant, and I appreciate the parking analysis that went through and projected the parking demands of the proposed project versus the supply, and I'm in total agreement with that. My question has to do with if there is a change of use in the future, and this doesn't always stay with the current property owner use, what assurances do we have that we won't be creating a situation where this goes commercial or higher-intensity office use, where we are then creating problems down the road for ourselves?
I believe the condition right now states that any change from an Artificial Kidney Center would have to first go to the Community Development Director, and then he'd decide whether it would come back here to you to review.
Specific conditions for him?
Yeah, I know it's in there. I read it.
Something else, Mr. Justice? Okay.
Kind of aren't you lucky that we had, like, a technological breakdown? You don't even have, I don't have to bore you.
Let's see what, we'll give it another couple of minutes here.
We're going to try and restart it.
Perhaps we can discuss the operation a little bit. Fiona wants to step up, and he went over a little bit when we were on the site visit about populations and the increase of this kind of need. It'd be kind of interesting to hear a little bit more on that. Dr. Allen?
One of the real tragedies in our country is the explosive rate of growth in the young obese population, and what that has done is that we're seeing hypertension and diabetes at younger and younger ages. And that's resulting in an increase in the chronic kidney failure population and patients reaching the point of what we call end-stage kidney disease, where you need renal replacement therapy. And that projected growth rate is now at 7% to 10% per year, so we're going to see a doubling of this population in the next 10 years. And at the present time, we're in a position where we're going to max out our current capacity within the next year or two, and this is really planning for the next 10 or 20 years of chronic kidney care here in, for the Santa Barbara and Goleta communities. So this is really a very needed health care facility, and we'd like to keep it located right here in Santa Barbara. The patients have multiple illnesses, multiple diseases, and a lot of them, very, actually the minority of our patients, drive to their treatments and drive home. The vast majority come by multi-passenger vans. That's Easy Lift or the Buena Vista Care Center, but the majority come by the AMR vans, who come, drop the patients off, and then leave to do other things, and then come back and pick them up. Other patients are brought and dropped off by their families, so our parking demand is very different than an average kind of office building or medical facility, and it's largely driven by the kinds of patients that we take care of.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Jacobs has a question for Dr. Allen? Okay.
Yes, for Dr. Allen. How many employees do you have, and do you expect it to increase when you get more patients?
Well, the average, this new facility has, would include 20 additional stations over and above what we currently have, and the current staffing is about one to four. So we're really looking at about five people. The reception function, the billing function, the back office and administrative functions are all going to remain the same, so four or five additional clinical care people.
For a total of, how many altogether would you say?
I don't know, because I have a number in my head, but we also have people in Lompoc, and so I don't know who's where.
Thanks.
It's about 80 between the two facilities.
Between the two facilities.
And that includes part-timers. That's not 80 FTEs.
Okay.
Mr. White?
I have a question for Mr. Cornell, Mr. Chair, when that's the right time.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
I wanted to ask you, I went and looked at the site and then went home and did my reading and learned about that parking in the back after I had left the site, so I need, do you have any pictures of that back parking area?
We looked, we looked all over for the pictures of that back parking area because we wanted to show them to you. Let me go to the end of this as close as I can get you. Unfortunately, that's as good as I can get you, and obviously the parking area is around the corner. It's essentially just surrounded by hedges on all, tall hedges on all sides, and you can, you know, the existing trash enclosure is at the rear of that.
And that's, I appreciate hearing that the trash enclosure is coming out of there, but, so I would ask, any comments of my colleagues about assuring the compatibility with the neighbors? That, to me, is a concern in concept, and as I say, I just didn't get that, go back and take that peek to see whether there was any potential for improving that compatibility situation. And one thought comes to mind is, could that be a staff parking area, therefore there would be one engine noise in the morning and one engine noise at night kind of thing in that, back in that corner as one way to minimize the impact?
It easily could. I think the reality is the staff parks there now as it is. That's pretty much that westernmost parking area is pretty much where staff does park, because, you know, most of the patients park in the front area, but it certainly could be. Staff gets there early in the morning at times, so, you know, you wouldn't want to necessarily create that conflict, but...
Good point.
The use itself is not going to change from what it's been for the 15 years that we've been there, so this is, we're just cleaning up the zoning, not changing the operation.
I hear that, and of course, you can imagine what, first of all, it is a little bit of an oddball use, and we've had some experience with it to your immediate, what is it, West, where your neighbors are going through that, and this is an opportunity to make it as good as it can be going forward, and you are intensifying, you hope to be intensifying anyway by investing in this, so that would be my request to my colleagues, if you have any thoughts from having seen it, whether fencing or anything that could make that just as compatible as possible with the, obviously, we had the one neighbor who's a savvy person in the world of land use making a comment about it, so just want to make sure that that's as compatible as possible.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
There is a six-foot perimeter fence around anything that abuts a residential use for the code.
It's actually a wall. It's a solid...
The lower one is a fence, the other one is a wall.
So...
Okay. We've got one more question from Mr. Thompson, and then I'd like for you to be able to get through your presentation.
Now that I've got it going, I apologize for that again.
I didn't have a question. I was going to answer Mr. White's question, and isn't there an elevation difference where the residential is actually higher than the parking, so there's a, the parking is somewhat submerged in comparison to the residential behind it, in addition to the wall, so...
Yeah, there's retaining walls...
Buffering from the residential.
That's correct. There's retaining wall along here and all along here. So actually, this landscaping is currently up a little bit higher, and again, there's not only the wall, but there's a full hedge all the way around, so there aren't any breaks in that, and I think obviously the one really good thing we've done is take, as you mentioned, the trash out of that area, so. So I'll just keep rolling here. Obviously, this is the existing site plan and the proposed, and I mentioned to you all at the site visit that I think the best thing that we've accomplished out of this plan is that the current retrofit of the old bank building, and this is, you know, your classic early '70s sort of contemporized Spanish, because of that grade break in the site, this area ended up being higher, where this, and this becomes the main entrance now into the Artificial Kidney Center, so the entrance off State, which was the old original bank entrance, is closed off, and you have most patients and visitors actually using the steps, even though there is an elevator to serve them. So by creating this addition of the much-needed additional treatment space, we're able to create then a centralized reception area, which will have very clear visual access off of State Street. The bus stop is going to be slightly relocated because it's pretty much right at that location today. We'll wall this area off that is the old front door to the bank with a stone wall and do the same thing along Valerio to create a nice little patio space off the new treatment areas. We have bicycle parking, and I think that's going to make the use much more clear with the surrounding neighborhood. The addition, as has been mentioned, is about 5,500 square feet or about 4,400 net. This, of course, is the new trash enclosure location, and really, the parking became much more efficient from a hardscape standpoint, because whenever you go with double-loaded, 90-degree parking, it's much more efficient than the single-loaded angled parking, and so that's how we were able to actually reduce the paving area but increase the number of parking spaces. This is the quick conceptual plan, one of, you know, we obviously are losing the large coral trees that are in the center of the site now, but we're going to replace one here at the corner. I think one of the things about the site that certainly HLC felt they wanted to maintain was that sense of landscape and buffer from the street, so we've kept the new building off a full 10 feet, a new tree canopy along here, I think these are firewheel trees, and then the street tree along Valerio, which I've forgotten. I think it's maybe a podacarpus. Just very quickly, this is basically the plan, so the treatment areas today are in the old lobby of the bank, and it's actually a nice, it's a spacious, nice, comfortable space. We want to create the same kind of a thing with this new building, and then there's the ancillary services or functions around the backside. And so with the building, we've really tried to, you know, the massing that's there now is actually nice, where it steps down towards the corner. It sort of works in a sculptural way, and so we wanted to carry that forward and just propose this very simple wall that is a backdrop to the landscape, really. And then on the Valerio Street side, you can see that sandstone wall again overlaying the landscaping, really let the building be very, very simple and just settle back into the landscape. This is the east elevation, the parking lot side, that being the main entrance now to the facility. And then these are just some quick little three-dimensional views. This one looking north from State. This one looking down back east. You can see, again, this doesn't, this shows that it's floating above the ground, but the stone wall here, I think, is going to be a very important addition to the front. And then the Valerio side with, again, the new entrance. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
I'll put the site plan back up.
The applicant?
I do have questions.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that, Brian, on that Valerio Street side, is there, can you talk about the relationship of the landscaping to the street there? Is that, does the pedestrian have access to that, or is that walled off?
No, that really, this is our service entrance, so we actually have a service door off this Valerio Street side, and so, you know, most of the service, we're talking about packages that are delivered by FedEx or UPS. We're not talking about large trucks, but they do have things that would just be loaded, you know, off through there, so that is not a pedestrian access.
No, I appreciate that access to the building is very, should, is and would be very controlled. You have the, in fact, you have the State Street and the parking lot entrances is how people would access the building, and then you have a service, you have one or more service entrances. But my thought is that that, what, one of the things that I like about this project is that it's, there is more landscape. The Valerio Street side is less driveway-like and more landscape, has more landscape, but I just want to make sure that it's not just walled off to the pedestrian walking by, that there's at least a sense of seeing it and a visual connection there. So would you, can you give us a little sense of that again?
Just quickly, going back to the site plan, you're right. This shows that there are those parking spaces there now, and obviously you can see there is extensively more landscaping. The opening that's into the treatment area right here, we see it as being a fairly large opening, and I'll just try to scroll quickly to those elevations. That's the State Street side again, so from this side, again, we seem to have a floating stone wall, but this wall is intended to be high enough to provide privacy in, so we're thinking five or six feet kind of a height, but low enough to where you still see that glass going in. Is that kind of what you're...
And then the landscaping in front of that is what I was asking about.
Yeah, so the landscaping in front of that, we have the large coral tree.
That's the new coral tree on the left.
New coral tree. That would be new, and then whatever, the podacarpus, these are our new trees, but then there are also the podacarpus street trees along Valerio right here, but then this is obviously all low planting in front of that wall.
So that would be what the pedestrian would experience walking by on Pedregosa Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. Let's see, two questions. In the, in the recommendations and in the conditions of approval regarding transportation and particular employee car usage and transportation usage, it requests that there'll be an employee lunchroom. I don't see that in the new part of the building. Is there an employee lunchroom with a microwave and refrigerator as spelled out?
I didn't bring the plan, but there is a large lunchroom currently at the second floor of the existing building.
Okay, good.
So that's where the administrative offices are and where there's lunchroom and staff lockers and that kind of thing.
Okay, good, good. And then, and I'll talk about this more later, but the one concern I have is the streetscape on State Street, that there's no windows, and when I look at the plan, I see it's because all the mechanical functions and storage and so on have been put along that, and there's no windows, and I'm wondering if you had looked at having windows there or some kind of articulation or...
Yeah, I think, I mean, the discussion here certainly was the notion of rather than having, it obviously isn't a retail kind of a function, and so in terms of what the building sort of wants, for me, it wanted that treatment area to have north and eastern kind of light and orientation, and certainly we had these service functions. So originally, we went to HLC with the notion of, let's just allow that, since it really doesn't want to have windows functionally, allow that to be a backdrop, and I actually proposed that the entire wall, this entire wall be sandstone, and they felt that that was too much sandstone and actually preferred, they liked the idea actually of this wall as a landscape backdrop along State Street, that that was a nice relief, and that obviously we were creating this new, very prominent entrance off of State, and so it really became this wall as a landscape backdrop, not unlike, you know, the George Washington Smith walls that you see in Upper, you know, Upper East Side and in Montecito, and I think that HLC really liked that idea, and ultimately, the landscape plan, I can't describe what all the vegetation is on the ground, but it really just becomes about the landscape. Now, obviously, we're trying to, you know, create a little bit of life in that wall, so it isn't just a wall, so having a couple of punctuations, and we could have potentially more if we wanted to articulate it. That was the basic design concept, and HLC, I think, liked that.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question, probably both for applicant and/or staff, and it's related to the drainage and stormwater retention. As I look at the civil plans, it appears that you're really only addressing the immediate area around the proposed addition and the revamped portion of the parking lot, and then when you go back to the conditions of approval, it makes reference to the stormwater management plans, which we had a large presentation a few months ago, which the whole scenario presented in that presentation was that the post-development runoff couldn't be more than the pre-development runoff for a certain period of time, certain level storm, and pre-development means, you know, native site, not prior to doing this addition. So I'm wondering, are there additional measures that are being done to handle all the runoff on the other portion of the site? The portion where you're asking for the parking, the CUP to have the parking?
Yeah, the one, I mean, we are accomplishing what you're talking about, Bruce, but you're right. We can't, it's, at this point, we are not addressing it for this portion, which, you know, this is the high point basically, and that's draining down.
Right, but this is an application for a lot merger, and you're, you know, trying to do the commercial parking in the residential zone, and the way it's described...
I'm not trying. I just want to leave it there.
Right, but the staff report says that because we have more hard surface on-site than prior to this addition, it's essentially being mitigated by creating more landscape in the public parkway, which is off-site, so I, that doesn't seem to follow...
It's a hundred...
...the stormwater management plan.
It's a 100-square-foot reduction in the landscaped areas on the lot. We're recapturing more than that in the public right-of-way, where we're going to have new landscape planters, but it's less than a 0.2% increase in impervious service, and there are some small things that they can do on the site that we can catch at plan check that wouldn't change the overall design features but would bring it down.
But it was our understanding as a commission that the stormwater management was to the pre-development condition, not what this applicant is starting with now with a building and a paved parking lot, and that's what I'd like clarity on.
And I don't know if timing has, is part to do with that because of when we applied, but I do, I actually misspoke. We are proposing to put permeable paving in this area to deal with...
Right, because all that just drains to State Street right now.
And I, you know, I suppose that it's possible that, you know, because we have that landscape area, that perhaps that could be utilized, I don't know, but...
Okay, just asking a question.
Mr. Cotto?
And maybe counsel could answer that. I mean, or is it, is the, is the condition, does the condition go back to pre, to Christopher Columbus conditions or...
Mr. Chair, I can't, sitting here, I don't know. The implementation of the SWMP is, has been and will continue to be in the future a challenge right now, where it's new to us, and sitting here looking at the applications before us, granted, there's a modification, the, this is one of those, one of those things where I'm looking at the impacts of this particular project, and as staff just mentioned, essentially regarding the new improvements, the project is addressing the impacts of the new improvements, there is a negligible change to the existing condition otherwise, and in some ways, a positive change. As to how the SWMP deals with that proportionality is one of the things that is going to be a challenge for us. The SWMP was drafted in a fashion, Commissioner Bartlett is correct, that the SWMP was drafted with a comment that it, with the idea that if a project goes to the Planning Commission, simply because it goes to the Planning Commission, the city has a greater breadth of regulation. And the, when you try to match that up with, the nexus and proportionality dictates that we have... we have from the, the Supreme Court on regulatory actions, it's difficult to match that up and say, simply because a project goes before one decision-making body, it therefore puts everything on the table regardless of the impacts of the project. The SWMP was drafted in a, in a, from a standpoint of, of an understanding of the city's process and the city, where the, the boards and commissions, particularly the ABR and the HLC, have a particular scope of, of their, their reach, what they, their charge, what they regulate, essentially the, the design of structures. They're not a land-use body, they're an aesthetic body. And so the SWMP treats the projects that go simply to design review in a different fashion than the projects that come here, because this is a land-use body. Where I, where I think the, the SWMP could and probably will need some strengthening as the SWMP implementation ordinance is drafted, because that's one of the, the plan elements of the SWMP, is to draft an ordinance that actually starts implementing the policies in there. And one of the things that we're going to have to deal with is this proportionality for, because really, just having a project come to the planning commission in and of itself really doesn't get us to that point of proper proportionality of the regulations.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I just, that, the, that's, retain common sense as well as appropriate rainwater, right?
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Cotto, you have something to add?
Yeah, Chair Myers, it's my understanding, and I'd bet money on this, is that it is not as, as Commissioner Bartlet thinks. It is the, the pre- to post is what was there on-site before you came with the project versus after. It's not going all the way back to a vacant lot.
Okay, great.
And I think it does, in, in your conditions of approval, by the way, page three of thirteen, C3, the first couple of sentences there describes what it's been designed for. And so that's why the, the permeable surface has been added down at this end to pick up that first, I think it's the first inch of water, first inch of rain.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Cornell.
Thank you.
I think we're, we're finished. At this time, I'll open up the public comment hearing for this project. We have one public speaker, I think that's it. Mick Cronin, Croneman?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Mick Croneman. I've been a resident of our local community for, well, more years than I'd like to count, actually forty-plus. And I've had the great pleasure of knowing the three kidney doctors in this room for twenty-plus of those years. They've actually, in fact, I'd like to keep them here for a while, we have great discussions. But they've actually seen me through three kidney transplants since nineteen eighty. They've increased my quality of life, they've saved my life on several occasions. But what I have to tell you is certainly less about land use, but more about the bridge between those kidney transplants that's involved with dialysis and in particular, this dialysis unit. There have been times in my life and many other people who've been fortunate enough to receive organ transplants where they needed that bridge between when they are diagnosed with end-stage renal disease and when they're lucky or fortunate enough to, to get an organ transplant. And that's where these centers come in invaluable. I had the experience last summer of spending a few months being dialized at this unit here, and I can tell you that having been in several dialysis units in my many years, this is the finest one I've ever had, the, the pleasure, if you'll allow me the word, of being treated in. There is abundant attention to the needs of the patients, the open space is considerable, the amount of windows and light and all the small amenities that make a difficult treatment process, if you'll allow me, bearable and, and doable, have been attended to. The folks that are advancing this project to you today have an extreme sensitivity to the needs of those people. And beyond that, as Dr. Allen expressed to you, and I can attest to, because I've been through this process for a long enough time that I've seen the changes that he referred to statistically. The fact of the matter is, our community and our country at large is going through, if you'll allow me, an epidemic of diabetes and, and the resultant kidney disease and kidney failure that comes from that. And the expansion of this unit, the relatively, what I consider modest expansion of this unit, is in keeping with those needs and, and keeping with the needs of our community, because we're seeing a tremendous rise in end-stage renal disease. And while on one hand, we're trying to educate the community about lifestyle, on another hand, we're trying to cure the diseases that caused end-stage kidney failure, there is a dramatic need to take care of the people who have been, who suffer these, these maladies currently. I know those people, I've seen those people, I've lived with those people, and let me tell you, this is a vulnerable community that desperately needs the help of the individuals who are proposing this project. And I therefore would strongly urge, of course, within your acceptable guidelines that you've been discussing today, your approval of this project, because it's an extremely important and valuable part of our, our medical community and the facilities related to that. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Seeing no one else coming forward to speak, I'll close the public hearing for this and bring it back to the commission. A question by Mr.--
One last question, and that is, I look, in looking at the plans, I didn't see any little symbols that spoke to light poles or Cobra heads. I would ask either applicant and staff about that. It's a big enough site and strategically located such that I would have expected to find at least one light standard in that, in that range there.
When we were on the site visit, on your behalf, I brought up--
Yeah, thank you.
--the Cobra head on the, on the street corner. Ms. Cornell, did you get any chance to pay any more attention to that?
There it is.
And did staff also see a nexus in this, for this project?
And I was just going to add, I mean, certainly, I think that's, that's the question, and, and Mr. Vincent kind of indirectly even spoke to that, and, and, you know, I, Dr. Allen hasn't mentioned it, but I, I think you all are aware of, in the medical world, you know, the question of reimbursement is always, you know, utmost. And I can tell you that this is going to be a very, very costly facility to build. There are a lot of aspects of building under the current California code that's going to make this very expensive relative to what the doctors had to expend when they renovated this existing building. So I'd urge you to, if, if we can, and, and I guess to also speak to it, I'm not sure what we do, because that's the one Cobra head is on the, it's on the actual--
Yeah, there it is.
And that's a granite base?
Yes, that's a granite base.
So--
Chair, I mean, is there not the, the changing out? We've talked about this on other situations where we're changing, proposing to change out the, the lamp or the, the armature, not the, not the pole. And it's not, it's, it's a, a few thousand-dollar expenditure, it's not a ten-thousand-dollar expenditure. So it would seem to me that that would be, and it is clearly complimentary to this site, so I would ask that this be considered a candidate for this, for this site.
Okay.
And if I just go into my comments, Mr. Chair, I just, I couldn't be more supportive of this project. I appreciate that the scale of the, of the expansion is very compatible with, with the neighbors, and I appreciate that there's, this is not exactly a pedestrian interacting facility in this portion of State Street, but it's, it's totally appropriate. And I, the improved landscaping, I think, is more than a positive offset to the, to the slight reduction in, in landscaping that's going on. I think that the, where it's located next to Valerio, I think the Valerio experience will be much improved, and of course, the community will be better prepared in the future for this increased demand and need for, for these medical services. With the, with the Cobra head, the armature replacement, I'd be glad to support this project.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. Again, we can't say enough for the work that you do in the community, and for that reason alone, supporting this project is, is a pleasure. And I also appreciate the site plan and the elimination of the driveway cuts. I think the massing and the overall structure is completely appropriate for the neighborhood. You could have built something taller, and you chose to keep it simple, and that, that is, works for me. I also appreciate the sidewalk improvements. The bank in its day had put out some Salteo tiles, and it makes an uneven surface there that's not, not very easy to, to walk on around the bus stop. So the improvements that you'll be making to the sidewalk are also very, very good. I have two concerns. The first is about the parking, and especially for the employees. And I think that those are addressed in the conditions of approval, in particular with the assignment of a transportation manager that will make annual reports, and that the reuse of this property for any other purpose would draw it back into the purview of our traffic and our planning staff to analyze it again. My second concern after parking is for the streetscape on State Street. This building is designed almost as if it were in a suburban corporate park, surrounded by gardens and parking lots, but in fact, it's located on the primary commercial and retail corridor of Santa Barbara. So it creates a, a dead zone in terms of the, the sidewalk on this street, on this part of the street. Going up, proposed next door to it is a mixed-use building that hopefully will bring some liveliness to the street and counterbalance that a bit. But for me, the streetscape is important, and the, the thing that I ask for to, to make that stretch of pavement welcoming to pedestrians and to bus riders is twofold. The first is I'd like to request that the State Street door entry always be open. I'm sure that's your intention, but we have seen businesses on Upper State Street that have a similar configuration, put up signs that say, "This entrance is closed," go around to the back, because staff doesn't have the ability to watch two entrances, and you set it up so that it should work just fine. But I would like to see something in the conditions that require that during business hours, that front door remain open so that people can use it. And secondly, there is a bus stop there. The existing building originally had a niche and a bench and some landscaping that was for the bus stop. Then the bus stop got moved at the request of the MTD, so now there's a kind of dinky little bench out there, and that bus stop gets a fair amount of use, being on the, the main transit corridor for the city. So I would like to reference the urban design guidelines and ask that a, a bus stop be put in, in the new building, that's in keeping with the urban design guidelines. Ideally, it should be incorporated somehow into the landscaping and this blank wall that we have facing State Street. So with those two comments, I, I certainly support this project and look forward to supporting or making a motion when the time comes.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I concur with Commissioner Jacobs on the street improvement aspects of this project. I think the real benefit of what we're seeing here is that we're getting rid of the old vestiges of a, a drive-through facility, which obviously, the city would never permit today. So getting rid of the, the extra driveways on State Street, I think, will allow the opportunity to create a better pedestrian experience on State Street and get the bus stop where it truly wants to be. So I think if we can really enhance the bus stop aspect of that, I think we will be better off. We're also getting more perimeter landscape that at least addresses the public realm, both on Valerio and State Street that we didn't have before. So I think the streetscape will be improved, but I concur with, with your comments about the, the bus stop and the other pedestrian aspects. I also am in support of the parking modification in this request. I think it is reasonable, given how most of the patients arrive to the site, and I do like the condition that staff had in the staff report, that should the use of the building change, that that be up for review again as part of the conditional use permit, so that we have future control over how this building evolves over its lifetime. And I think that the conditional use permit for the parking is very much in keeping with what we did last year with the adjacent project, which had the same zoning line running through it. So I feel that we're being consistent in that decision, and given the fact that we're not changing the, the buffering landscape and the site walls back there, I think it's actually going to be less impactful to the neighbors, especially when the trash enclosure is removed from that rear corner. I think it will make it quieter for the neighbors to keep the trash out near the street rather than deep into the site. So I will be able to support the project and look forward to seeing it move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo all of the comments that have been made so far. I think this, this project really represents one of the community's highest priority projects, and it, it shows in the way you've addressed this particular site and the reuse, so to speak, of, of the old, old building. I particularly appreciate Mr. Croneman's testimony today, taking time off from a busy schedule to make sure we're clear about your insights, personal insights into what goes on here. And I'd also like to say, this kind of goes back to Mr. Cornell's historical roots in architecture. I recall sitting with you, Brian, probably close to twenty years ago, talking about your preference to doing a lot of medical facilities and wanting to expand on that, and you're back to your roots in, in a certain, in a certain way, so I appreciate that as well.
Question of the style.
Speaking of the style, I, I'm looking forward to how you treat this, this wall along State Street. I, I think it's going to be, it's going to be extremely well-done, even though it's simple. So I'm strongly supportive of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I strongly support the project. It's a good project that is very sensitive to the community where it's sited, and we could have seen requests to put in a much taller building, as we've been seeing coming in recently. So I really appreciate that you're being sensitive to the site and the community surrounding the site. As far as the comments from all my fellow commissioners, a lot of good comments, I'll just address the findings regarding the modification. The parking demand study shows proposed parking that would support the request for the modification, so definitely, I would support that. As far as the CUP, the existing parking is a, more than a decade's experience, it's shielded from the residential, so there's not any problem with the finding for the CUP. And I'd also point out that that small section of R3 would be totally unusable as an R3 piece of property, because you couldn't put anything on that property there, that small parcel or piece of parcel. Then as far as the development plan, there's certainly a community need for the, the project as proposed, and there's no doubt that this is a, appropriate for a development plan. I would point out that in finding C3, I believe we should say the HLC, not the ABR. Other than that correction, I would strongly support this project moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I don't have any differing opinions. I think that it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful use, and it's a great project. The only thing I would ask is that if you're proposing lighting for the parking lot, that it be decorative in nature and considerate of the neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, being chair in a project like this, you, it's kind of hard to find something new to say. I certainly support and concur with my, my fellow commissioners. It's very easy for me to support the parking mod for the aforementioned reasons, the CUP for the parking and, and the development plan. There is one little issue that I have in regard to this, this area right here. I would, I would look to see this landscaping as robust as possible, and maybe this one as well, so that you get as much blocking from public view of the parking. I also noticed-- I also noticed when we were on-site that there looked to be some, some abandoned vehicle that was in the back there. I was, I would hope that situations like that would, would not recur. But, but it is, I, I appreciate the, the effort and I appreciate, you know, what is, what, what you're doing here and, and the service that you're providing. And, and thank you, Mr. Conman, for coming in and sharing your time. It was, it's always a shock to hear the need and, and it's good that we can provide such a service to our community. So I'll look to Ms. Jacobs for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Myers. I move that the planning commission approve the project, making the findings as outlined in the staff report on pages six and seven. Finding that the parking modification is an appropriate improvement, that the conditional use permit findings are appropriate, and that the development plan is appropriate with the change of C3 referring to the Historic Landmarks Commission, not the Architectural Board of Review, which is in there. And with the following changes to the conditions of approval. That the conditions of approval reflect a bus stop to be integrated into the design on State Street. And that that bus stop shall be in keeping with the urban design guidelines for bus stops. This would be in condition A3, which is design, and also in condition C4, which is for public works. And eight. C8, that would be C8. That the, regarding employee parking and the configuration of the parking lot, that parking spaces 11 through 19, as shown on the proposed plan that we're reviewing today, be marked and numbered for employee parking. And I believe that's B6 Sub G. And that the light fixture be, that the, that there be a change of the Cobra Head light fixture atop of the signal light.
Okay. You finished?
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned something about the, keeping the door, the door open to?
Oh, and that, that the door on State Street side shall be open during business hours.
And then Ms. Larson had to comment about the decorative outdoor lighting.
Also in the parking lot, again, B6. That lighting in the parking lot be of a attractive nature that is sensitive to the residential neighbors.
Okay, we have a second, more discussion? Under discussion regarding the, the change out of the Cobra Head. We have, we've discussed on other projects, a maximum, a cost, in the event that this becomes too complicated an issue. And I believe that cost was $2,000 or $2,500 to change out just the fixture itself.
I'm sure it was about $2,500. And I think in that case, it was a deal where the city would like order it, but, because I think we get a, we get a, we get it cheaper and then the applicant would pay for it. We have some specific language in that condo, condo conversion that was down in the industrial zone. So we could?
Does the commission want to entertain something similar here?
As the motion maker, I would entertain a price ceiling for the Cobra Head change-out. That's, do we want to make a vote? Do we want to hear from the applicant?
Yeah. Mr. Cornell?
Well, just, just in the, in the spirit of all of this, I mean, again, it's, it's certainly, it's, it's not a lot, but, you know, it is. I, I'd recommend a limitation below 2,500, something like 1,500 dollars, something. I mean, if, if there's no nexus and it's being added as a condition and all the things that we are doing and just knowing how much this is going to cost, I'd just urge you to try to minimize that, those cost impacts, obviously.
There is a nexus. The nexus comes in the conditional use permit and in the parking modification and the effect that the traffic and circulation.
And the city looks to try to update these and get them changed out. And we look at projects like this to facilitate?
I understand, but I think the real thing we're here for is the mod. I think the CUP aspect of this, since that parking lot's been there for over 30 years, is, is a little bit of a cleanup, you know, so.
Mr. Chair, can we bring it back to the commission? I would be willing to entertain a $2,500 ceiling on the Cobra Head as part of the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
On the, a little discussion on the, the proposed restriction on keeping the State Street door open, I'd, I'd like to hear from the applicant if, if that's viable in their business model. And number two, the issue with designating those parking spaces in the R3 as only for staff parking, would it be appropriate to encourage staff parking but not restrict it from other parking? Because if we do that, say that's got to be marked for staff parking only, and if there's three parking spaces open and somebody pulls in and they couldn't park there, then we're just creating more problems in the neighborhood. So if you want to encourage that to be where staff parks by letting the staff know it, I would be in favor of that. But restricting it to only staff parking, I think would be counterproductive. So those are two points that I'd like to discuss before we have a vote.
Well, I would, Commissioner Thompson, I would absolutely agree with that comment on the parking, the more flexibility, the better. And, and I think that obviously the doctors can direct staff through this whole transportation demand management program to, you know, to park in that area. As far as the entrance being open, that's completely fine. We've definitely designed this now so that there, it, it all connects and makes sense. The reception is going to be right here in the middle, so there'd be no reason to, you know, luckily, we have the configuration here that really lends itself to that, so that's no problem.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
The neighbor to the north, his concern was that the parking lot here and immediately adjacent, people congregate in the areas that are closest to the residential neighbors and talk. And it could be for hours after work hours. So I think from the neighbor's perspective, they would rather see the employees park elsewhere because they're there longer than the patients than right there against their home. So just something to consider.
Okay, we have a couple more comments by the commissioner. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask the maker of the motion if perhaps we could add something else to it that normally she includes in her motions. And that would be about recycling of the existing building or its materials when it is demolished.
Funny, I didn't think of that with this particular building. But there may be something there.
Well, at least the materials, but, right.
Okay, Ms. Larson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just one other thing about the cost of the streetlight. Because we don't exactly know what it costs, could I just suggest that in the language we say that the street, that the streetlight could be at the, at the same, that the city's cost, not to exceed the city's cost and, and not put a dollar amount. Because the cost of materials and manufacture change all the time, and I, I don't know if that's a $3,000 item or if it's a $2,550 item. So, you know, if I could just suggest that.
I, I have a question about it, too. We have seen Cobra change-outs on regular light posts, but we don't often see them on signal lights. And it may actually be a different, but, but this is an item to address Mr. White's concern, and I'd be interested to hear his thoughts on that. I, I'm satisfied with the motion as it stands.
Would anything further?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm, I feel like there's a very strong nexus for the change-out of the, of the, of the Cobra Head regardless. And the, the development plan was also not mentioned as another one. I, I feel like we're, there are lots of, of public improvements that are happening on this project, on the sidewalk, the bus stop, all of which dwarf the, the Cobra Head cost. And so I feel like it's getting short shrift here where it, it's one of the most visible aspects of this corner. And it's one of the most signature aspects of this city. So a, something that's going to upgrade the city as much as that would, I'm disappointed that we're, we're, we're lowering the likelihood of it happening. Obviously, one of the things that could occur with this $2,500 number is, if we go along five years, you know, in this deflationary environment, which we all know is going to turn into a massive inflationary environment, where $2,500 is going to buy you a pair of shoes or something, then that number is, will need to get readjusted. I'm going, I will, I'm not peeping on it because at least I'm getting a, a tilt in the direction of the, of the Cobra Head coming out. And that's what I think is most important.
Okay, well, at this time, the motion stands as read. Mr. Vincent?
We've had a, a number of comments regarding nexus. And we haven't had any comments about proportionality, but we have had a number of comments about nexus. I want to remind the commission that the nexus issue is a nexus with the project impacts, not geographic proximity, not the desire to beautify the public right-of-way. It's the project impacts. And you do have discretionary actions here, and I've been considering the three actions that you have. The parking modification has potential impacts regarding the use of the right-of-way. The parking, either on-street parking exacerbating the, the existing condition regarding on-street parking. I'm familiar with this particular corner and the businesses that are already there. It is difficult to park there. I see a nexus between the parking modification and the bus stop improvements that make it more likely that the people who use this site will avail themselves of public transportation. The, the other actions, the development plan approval has lots of things going on. But the development plan approval is about the development of this private property, not the improvement of the right-of-way. The right-of-way is the city's property. It's the city's obligation. We do have cases when we have the subdivision of property and we apply similar divi, we treat the right-of-way as part of the design and the improvement of that subdivision. We don't have a subdivision here. We actually have a merger where two lots are going to one. That's actually a discretion, a non-discretionary action. It's a ministerial action that occurs at the Public Works Department. The, the final action of the conditional use permit regarding the parking, I would submit that the impacts of that are that this, it's a residentially zoned portion of the lot. And the reason why the commission has the conditional use permit authority over that is to deal with the issues, the potential conflicts between the non-residential use of that parking space and the adjacent residential uses. I believe that the commission has satisfied itself that this project is responding to those potential conflicts. And you've, and you're still wrestling with some of the issues. And I'm unsure how the commission's ultimately going to, to rule on those, on that question regarding the assignment and so forth. As far as the Cobra Head, I do not see a nexus between the actions that are required of the commission. The, the impact that is being addressed by the switch-out of the Cobra Head is an aesthetic change. This project is not changing the aesthetic of the, of the pro, of the right-of-way, except in the positive. They're already making changes to the right-of-way. They're taking hardscape and making green space. The bus stop, we've already spoken to that issue where the commission has asked for, and I believe that is appropriate. But this project is not creating a negative aesthetic impact that requires the change-out of that, of the Cobra Head. And without a subdivision, where we talk about the design and the improvement of the right-of-way as part of that subdivision, the actions before you, I don't see having a nexus to the, to the Cobra Head. I see them with, with the bus stop, but not the Cobra Head.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. In prior projects, we have had the same issue with, with the lack of nexus and still required the change-out of a Cobra Head. So I, I, what you're, what you're telling us is that there, from your point of view, there is no nexus, but from our discretionary standpoint, we can still ask for one.
What I'm saying is, I don't see the nexus. If the applicant chooses to challenge that condition, it is, that, the, I see the bus stop as being a defensible condition. I am less confident that the streetlight change-out is a defensible condition, given the, the impacts of this particular project.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. So I'll put it back to the motion maker on two items. One is the identifying the parking spaces for public parking, or for employee parking only, and the issue of the change-out of the Cobra Head.
I'd like to keep the parking as I stated it, but I'm, I'd like to hear more discussion on it, if there is more discussion. The, the reason for designating it is, is that, as I drove through the site several times during the week, and just to check and see, you know, how full is this parking lot? Who is there at different times of day? And there is a lot of turnover because people are coming for their treatments and then they're leaving, or they're being picked up, or, and I didn't go into this, although I wanted to, some of the vehicles are quite oversized. They are ambulances or Easy Lift, and there's no oversized parking space for them, so they simply stop kind of wherever they can, close to the door, and they block the, the circulation of the parking lot. But that's probably going to happen anyway. Ideally, there would be some oversized parking spots for them, but you don't have room for it because already you're asking for less parking spaces than you need, so I'm just leaving that one alone. But the parking is very constricted in this lot, and it is that way pretty much all day. So for the residences that abut this back area, and if we had the aerial view, you could see they're on two sides of it, to have high turnover of cars coming and going and maybe people sitting and talking on their cellphones while they wait for whomever they've dropped off to have their treatment, you know, it's, it's a different kind of parking situation than employees. Employees, yes, they may hang out after work, but if they get complaints from the neighbors, the dialysis center can say, keep those conversations someplace else. You know, go someplace else to have those talks. If you, I, I know you would do that if you got complaints from your neighbors. So I think that marking off those spots for employees, and we have, you know, probably 30 or 40 employees coming and going, so those, what is it, eight spots? There's going to be plenty of employees that are going to be glad to have those spots marked off that just say employee parking. And if the lot is full and someone is desperate to find a parking spot and there's an employee's spot open, they'll probably just pull in anyway. That certainly happens in other doctor's offices around town. So I, I believe that it is a good move in consideration of the neighbors to, in some way, restrict that parking to employees and therefore to the control of the dialysis center administration.
Okay. Anything further on the Cobra Head? Remains the same?
Cobra Head, I think that putting in a $2,500 ceiling and asking for it in our discretion is reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I would like to weigh in on the, the assigned parking issue. We had this exact same issue come up on our office building when we developed it and we used band-mase parking. And one of the conditions of approval was no labeling of any parking stalls because you're parking less than ordinance and doing it on demand. If an employee isn't there, somebody else should be able to use that spot. And when you assign employee parking and that spot's not available to the public. And we have Stacy Wilson here, and I'd love to hear her interpretation of how you've done it on other projects. I'm just familiar with, with our own and that that was a specific condition of approval in acknowledging that we, yes, we do have less than the ordinance parking. So I, as much as I want to support the project, I can't support that aspect of it, and I'd like to hear it from your point of view.
Chair Myers and commissioners? As far as? As far as assigning parking, we prefer not to. Like Mr. Bartlet was saying, it's the highest and best use, and whoever the users are and the demand is coming from at a particular time. So, I mean, hopefully, we're, as you talked about, improving the bus, the transit, and the pedestrian opportunities, and we also have the bicycle parking that's a part of this project, so there are a number of options for getting to the site, especially for staff.
Great, thank you. Before we go any further, let me just take a straw poll on the Commission for including assigned parking in the conditions of approval. All those in favor of that inclusion, please raise their hand.
If it's just me, then I would withdraw that part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Justice?
I was just going to say, I'm worried we're getting to the arena of splitting hairs, and I don't have very many to split here. So I'm going to vote for the project, because I think it's a good project. I'm not going to deal with some of the details, but whatever's the will of the Commission, I'm going to support.
Okay. Thank you very much. So...
For the question, Mr. Chair?
All right. I guess there's not a need to restate the motion, or you've got it, Danny? We're okay? Let's say we are.
I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Vote seven, nothing, you have a project. This is appealable to City Council within 10 days.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want your plans, Brian?
I would like to thank the Commission for taking the time and the careful consideration that you've given all of this, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. I'd also like to say, Mr. Chair, that we're going to miss you. Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Do you want your plans, Brian?
Okay, this brings us to our item number four, which is our administrative agenda. Mr. Cato?
I do have one item that I probably should have done in announcements, but there are several of you, four, I believe, who have yet to turn in your AB 1234 Ethics Training Certificates. For those four, do you know who you are, and have you done it? That needs to be turned in by...
December 28th?
Yeah, soon. So if you haven't done it, it's an online thing that you do. I don't think it takes very long. And print out your certificate and get it to the City Clerk's office, pretty please.
Okay.
Mr. Cato, you don't have me on that list, do you?
I think you're the only one that's not on it.
I was going to say, because I didn't do the online thing. I took a two-hour seminar and turned the paperwork in.
Right.
Yeah, you're not on the list.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I should probably, I was remiss in the last project in mentioning, other than Steve Welton's letter that we had received, that staff had mentioned, that we also received a communication from Paula Westbury. Couldn't leave without making acknowledgement of that. Okay, committee and liaison reports? None? Okay, review of the decisions of the staff hearing officer, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One item was dropped, there's a two-item agenda yesterday. One item was dropped, and the second one was approved with, let's say, two residents project at 1405 Harborview Drive, and Ms. Reardon made a number of requests that ABR examine the design and tighten down on the project's impacts on neighbors in bulk. But it was approved.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will make note that this is the Planning Commission's last meeting of this year, so we want to wish everyone happy holidays, a Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa.
Mr. Chair? Before John goes, let me have one, because we have, I'll be the capper. But I would also like to say that, to acknowledge the TV crew, which makes all of us get out to the community, Kristi Zwicky and Chris Bell, I believe, were handling it today, and of course, Tony Ruggeri is normally, is managing it and is on vacation today. But thank you, team, for providing us this venue.
Thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we adjourn, I would like to just express my appreciation to you, Mr. Chair, for your four years of commitment and contribution to the good work of the Planning Commission and to this last year's service as Chair.
Thank you.
And you will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, this is my last meeting with the Planning Commission. I can't tell you what a pleasure it has been to serve with you all. I particularly am appreciative of the mentorship and the tutelage and the patience that both you, Mr. Justice, and Mr. White have given these early naive eyes at the beginning of this stint. You really helped me along quite a bit, and I really am appreciative of that. And to serve with such a great body has been one of the best privileges of my life. I look at public service as an important aspect of life, and to serve here was really wonderful. So thank you. Thank you all very much. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting.